Good evening, and welcome to the Agora Hills Planning Commission meeting. Please silence all your cell phones and other electronic devices. If you wish to speak or submit a written comment, please complete a comment card for each item and submit to the city clerk prior to the public comment portion of the item. Actually, Commissioner Sharon, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, please stand.
Kimberly, will you call the roll?
Good evening. Commissioner Reinhardt?
Present.
Commissioner Sharon?
Present.
Commissioner Stein?
Present.
Vice Chair Roth?
Present.
Chair Anderson?
Present.
Chair Anderson, you have a quorum.
Terrific. We need a commissioner to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Vice Chair Roth, so moved.
Commissioner Reinhardt, seconds.
Terrific. May we have a roll call?
Commissioner Reinhardt?
Aye.
Commissioner Sharon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Vice Chair Roth?
Aye.
Chair Anderson?
Aye.
Chair Anderson, you have approval five to zero.
Terrific. This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items not listed on the agenda that are under the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. If you have something to distribute to the Planning Commission, please do not approach the DA, hand your item to our city clerk, and she will distribute on your behalf. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. Persons addressing the Planning Commission shall not engage in disorderly conduct that disrupts or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. I will now defer to the city clerk.
Thank you. We did not receive any written public comment, nor do we have any speaker cards.
Fantastic. All right, so we're going to move on to the consent calendar. This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items on the consent calendar. I will defer to the city clerk.
Thank you. No public comments.
Terrific. Okay. Are there any questions from the commission on the consent calendar? I will now call for a motion and a second to adopt the consent calendar.
Vice Chair Roth, so moved.
Commissioner Sharon, seconds.
And defer to the city clerk for a roll call.
Commissioner Reinhardt?
Aye.
Commissioner Sharon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Vice Chair Roth?
Aye.
Chair Anderson?
Aye.
Chair Anderson, you have approval five to zero.
Wonderful. Okay, now we get to the good stuff. Our next item is to conduct a public hearing to consider approval of a conditional use permit and site plan architectural review permit. I will now open the public hearing and defer to Community Development Director Thomas for the staff presentation.
Thank you, Chair, Planning Commission. My name's Denise Thomas. I'm the Community Development Director here in the city of Agora Hills, and the item that you're going to be considering this evening will be presented by Katrina Garcia, our associate planner. It is a request to make amendments to an existing single-family resident in the Oldagora neighborhood, and with that, I'll defer to Katrina.
Thank you, Denise. As Denise mentioned, the item is for a single-family residential addition located at 6441 Chesbrough Road. So in tonight's discussion, I'll cover the project's site and surrounding area, the existing conditions, the proposed scope, the design and architecture, and then staff's recommendation. The site of the project is located on the northern portion of the city's boundary on Chesbrough Road within the Palo Comato Significant Ecological Area, or the SEA. It's zoned open space restricted with an Oldagora and equestrian overlay and with a drainage way overlay that runs through the middle of the lot. The site is surrounded by expansive open spaces with other single-family residential uses. The site is about two acres with a 23% average sloping hillside mostly located west of the creek, shown here with a blue box. The site was damaged by the Woolsey Fire and burned down an existing equestrian structure which was on the west side of the creek bed. Majority of the existing development and the proposed project is located on the east side of the creek bed indicated here with a red box. The site also contains several mature oak trees primarily near or within the creek. Some of the existing built structures include the three-story single-family residence and wood decking. Within the rear yard is an active existing septic tank and dispersal field. The site also has two drive aisle openings along Chesbrough Road but will not be modified as part of the project. The image on the bottom left is the front elevation which contains a large second-story balcony. At the rear are existing raised decks, also with a balcony on the second floor. Part of the rear yard also contains a chicken coop and a shed which is not shown on these images. The main entrance to the house is located on the side yard on the north elevation. This elevation also includes the two-car garage entrance, and the other side of the house has a swimming pool and an existing open trellis attached to the structure. The project proposes to add approximately 1,331 square feet of new floor area on the first and second floor. The third floor addition will only be located within the existing walls of the structure and proposes to convert 153 square feet of non-habitable space into habitable space. A portion of the existing covered entry will be incorporated to the interior of the first floor, thereby reducing the size of the covered entry to 52 square feet. Due to the increase in the building footprint, the site coverage increases to 4.3%, which is still below the maximum 10% that's allowed in the OSR. The first floor addition on the south side of the house will reduce the side yard setback to approximately 49 feet, but still above the 25-foot minimum allowed. All other setbacks remain unchanged. The project also includes citing a new equestrian area and a new septic tank and dispersal field, which I'll go over in detail on the next slide. This slide shows a partial site plan of the lot which focuses mainly on the development site. As I previously mentioned, the first floor addition is located on the south side of the existing structure adjacent to the swimming pool. An existing oak tree on the southwest corner of the addition will be minimally encroached on during excavation for the foundation. With the exception of 94 square feet, the second floor addition proposes to enclose 670 square feet of the large balcony located on the front elevation, which was seen on the existing site photos earlier in the presentation. A portion of the first floor's front entry on the north elevation will be incorporated into the main building. The previous equestrian site, which was located across the creek, was within the floodplain. Due to the potential hazards and standard LA County requirements, staff requested that a new equestrian area is sited at least 50 feet from the floodplain. The applicant chose to cite the new equestrian area on the southeast corner of the lot adjacent to the street. The new site is located beneath a canopy of two oak trees but will not be impacted because no structure is proposed. As part of the review process, LA County Environmental Health Services reviewed the project's existing private sewage facility and required that a new septic tank and dispersal field is installed according to the proposed additional floor area. Because the site is also within the SEA, this means that this part of the region or this part of the city has a likelihood of encountering more wildlife and protected species of plants and animals. The applicant submitted a biological survey which validates that there are no special status species or animals or plants on the site that would be significantly harmed by the proposed project. These next couple of slides are side-by-side images of the existing and proposed elevation. The image on this on the left is the existing front elevation showing the large balcony that's proposed to be enclosed. The proposed elevation shows a new cross gable roof structure for the addition and a new covered balcony at the forefront of the addition. This elevation also shows a new staircase to the new balcony located above the first floor addition. The slide shows the existing south elevation, which also shows the new addition on the first floor and the balcony and staircase that I mentioned on the previous slide. The existing clipped gable roof will be reconstructed to be an open gable as seen on the proposed elevation. The main entrance to the house and access to the two-car garage is located on the side on the north elevation. These images show the reconstructed clipped gable on the existing roof and the addition above the garage. The rear elevation has minimal changes other than the change to the gable roof and the exterior finishes. The next slides are colored renderings that show the new finishes from different perspectives. The project proposes to change all the exterior finishes of the structure, including removal of the existing stucco and roof finishes. The house will predominantly be covered with a gray board and baton siding, tan-hued limestone veneers on the first floor and on the chimneys, stained wood trim on some of the windows, and decorative cross beams, as seen on this image, wooden faux rafter tails beneath the roof eaves, gray asphalt shingles on the main roof structure, and a metal seam roof above the main entrance. The finishes are the same on each elevation of the house. The front entrance shown here will be covered with a metal seam roof and will be supported by stained wooden pillars with stone veneers. And on the other side of the house where the bulk of the first floor addition is located will also feature the same stone veneers and wooden trim. So with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission consider a resolution approving one conditional use permit case number CUP-2023-0024 and site plan architectural review permit case number SPR-2023-0042 for additions to an existing single-family residence, two oak tree permit case number Oak-2023-0082 to encroach into the protected zone of one oak tree, and three, making a determination of exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions, as are the applicants. Thank you.
Katrina, beautifully presented. Thank you. Any questions from commissioners? Or Commissioner Stein?
Commissioner Stein, I noticed that there was never a letter from Oldagora HOA. I just want to make sure because it seems that in the past, they have not been keeping abreast of some of these, and I just want to know that we're not going to have an issue with them down the line, other than that. And then the other thing I noticed is that you put in a clause for the nesting bird, and is that going to be an issue or just make sure that we're covering that? And is the applicant aware of that?
So for the nesting bird survey, that's in the conditions of approval, and we did give the applicant a copy of the conditions of approval prior to the hearing for them to review. And for Oldagora, usually how we've done it in the past, we would request that they only review the new single-family residences rather than remodels.
And when I drove by the property, it looked like some work was already started? Looked like some windows had been removed?
I can't speak to that, but maybe the applicant can answer that question.
Thank you.
I have a question. On the site plan that you had where it showed the property, I just wanted to be clear that the house, is it, the envelope of the house is not changing at all, correct? Is that, that's where I, the existing building line, it's not, that's the boundary and they're staying within that boundary, correct?
Sorry, there might have been an error in this. The existing building line actually shouldn't have included the light purple first floor addition. So the building line actually ends, should have ended right here.
Okay.
So it is increasing the building footprint.
Okay.
Katrina, thank you for the report. I have, I'm going to echo the question about the homeowners association, too. One, obviously, want to make sure that they're abreast of the project and have seen it. Did this, second question, did this go before the architectural review board, or is that not required as part of this project?
We don't typically bring remodels to the architectural review panel, and we don't typically give the projects to or ask Oldagora to review remodels.
And then my last question is, on the one oak tree, typically in presentations past, there's like an above, like bird's eye view of what will be impacted or not in this case. Just curious to know if you could reiterate the condition of the tree and what will happen during the construction process, and then just clarify if there's, because again, the visuals, I think, with oak trees are very helpful for me at least, so yeah.
So there's only one oak tree that will have potential impacts, and it's located on the southwest corner of where the addition is proposed. There will be some encounters with minor roots, which will not require any extensive pruning, but the anticipated encroachment is approximately 4%.
Which enters the threshold of requiring the oak tree permit, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Just a follow-up question on that. Do we have any sense from an arborist, what percentage of encroachment endangers an oak tree? 4% seems very small. Is it, 4% is highly likely to endanger an oak tree, or is it that, no, it's not until you get to 15 or 20% that the oak tree is potentially endangered? I recognize that any encroachment and the fact that you need a permit suggests that there is some risk. I'm just curious at the level of, if we, and we may not, and the answer may be, yeah.
The answer is there's no threshold that says if you do this, it will, it will impact the health of the oak tree. That's why whenever oak tree impacts occur, we have our arborist take a look at it. It isn't necessarily a threshold issue. It could be a location. What is being impacted? Maybe it's a major root as opposed to several minor roots. And so for that reason, we send all oak tree encroachments to the arborist to provide us with a report and a feedback.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, fantastic. We will now, oh, do any of the commissioners have ex parte communications to disclose?
Commissioner Stein visited the site?
Commissioner Reinhardt drove past the site.
Vice Chair Roth also drove past the site.
I did not, actually. Okay, terrific. Okay, so the public hearing is now open, and I will defer to my new friend from 15 seconds ago, the applicant. You or your representative will have 15 minutes for your presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening, and go ahead and adjust the microphone and watch for that red light on the podium. When you see the yellow light, you have one minute. When you see a yellow, so you've got 15 minutes, and a yellow light will come on at 14 minutes to tell you.
Oh, I see. One minute left. Okay, thank you. I don't have a lot to add to all the technical information that's been covered. I'm happy to answer any questions if they come up or if you need more detailed information. But since my main goal is to improve and provide new updated home to the owner, I think I just want to focus on the architectural features and present existing versus proposed and emphasize that there is a major difference, and we consider it to be an improvement of what we started with. And we put a little, very short presentation side by side of the four main elevations with basic renderings just for context. I know some of these you've seen. So the, the main elevation that actually you'll see when you drive up the street, although it's not the one facing the street, but it's the most exposed, is the one facing south. And that's currently kind of a bare wall with very minimal openings. The style of the house seems to maybe represent some kind of an old Dutch farmhouse. It's not exactly fitting a specific architectural style, but we were trying to kind of put a label on it, so that's the closest. And the transformation is more into a modern farmhouse, which has been, I think, seen before by the commission and has been under review or under construction over the last several years in the area, not specifically just in Agora, but the entire valley maybe. It's a very trendy, common, and very liked architectural style. It's a bit more on the rustic side with a combination of stone and rafter details and trims and dividing light on windows compared to maybe more of a modern farmhouse that's a little bit more bare, and that's the fit with the neighborhood. So what you see on this elevation is that footprint that is changing. The base and that double-height gabled on the left is the area that's being added to the house outside the existing footprint. That's going to be a larger kitchen and a breakfast area with a second-floor deck that provides access to an existing bedroom and a secondary rec space that's going to be built on that balcony to the front. Katrina, can you go to the next one, please? This one is the rear elevation, so other than the homeowner and people invited to the house, residents won't have any view of this. There is really minimal change to this. There is a very large oak that is providing wonderful shade around the property, and the deck and balconies are all staying. The only thing changing is the color of the stucco to match the new siding that's being added on the other three sides, and the railing is changing to match again the architectural style and just to upgrade it because it's not in great condition.
Can I ask a clarifying question? I think I understand this. There's a hole in the deck, and it seems to be like a shadow of a tree. So that's the existing oak tree, and then you've just kind of made it transparent so that we, the house.
Yes, exactly. Yes. So really, no, no major changes on this elevation. Next? Okay. We can talk about this one. So that's kind of a skewed view. The elevation facing the west, the, sorry, the left of the screen is actually the front elevation that's officially street-facing, although there is some existing hedging that kind of provides privacy, so it's not that clear of a view from the street. But when you drive up and down Chesbrough, that's the view that you're going to see. As Katrina mentioned, the entrance to the house is officially off the side, not the front, and as you can see on the bottom, existing, it's kind of staying in the same location, just the roof style is being changed to match the roof style that we're updating with a proper gable versus a clipped gable. All the windows are being updated. And obviously, the major difference is that second floor addition over what is currently just a garage and some bedroom space on the first floor with new habitable space and architectural features that are maybe a bit on the rustic farmhouse, combination of stone, siding, and wood trim. And yes, that's the other view of the front elevation. You can see also the access to the second, second-floor deck that's facing the pool that we saw in the beginning. So obviously, this rendering doesn't show all the existing vegetation, and it's a much more lush of a landscape, so the rendering is just to kind of focus on the architectural transformation of the house. I think that's mostly from my point of view is what's important, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do any of my fellow commissioners have questions for the applicant?
I just have a clarifying question about the deck. So you're not disturbing that existing oak tree area at all? You're just changing the color of the existing deck, like with, is it hardscape, or is it, like is it, is it brick or concrete?
The deck in the back?
Yes.
No, that's a wood deck. That's all existing. We're not touching that at all. The only thing changing around under the tree would be just a replacement of balcony railings.
Okay. All right, great, thank you.
I have a few questions. The oquestrated area, is there anything that is going to go into the oquestrated area? Is there going to be fencing, any additional structures?
Not at the moment, so, because the zone is such Not at the moment, so, because the zone is such that an equestrian area is mandatory. Honestly, there's been a major challenge to find an appropriate spot for that between all the different limitations of the city code, the LA County Code, the environmental hazards. So it's proposed to be located, if needed in the future, or if the owner here decides to ever, you know, use that, to then build the barn and a storage shed under the existing oak trees closer to the street, which is very common on, on that main road. But at the moment, there is no work proposed in that area.
Got it. So if, this question's for staff. If the applicant were to come in, say, two years and ask to build a barn in that equestrian area and put up a fence, would that come back to us, or how does that work?
Yes, so if they plan on building a barn, it'll be likely a ministerial permit, and we would also have to review the oak tree impacts with the new structure.
Okay, great, thank you. A second question I have, I guess it's kind of similar with the septic. Is the septic moving on the property?
Yes and no. There is an existing, it's according to the Public Health Department, not large enough for the extra capacity that's, so, there's a secondary structure, underground tank that's going to be proposed, and it's on the street side facing, so again, it's away from the creek. That was also some of the restrictions that we were at, so it was very limited. And it's using some newer version of those that are kind of low to the ground, and so it's really minimal excavation and minimal amount of work.
Great. Two more questions. What kind of stone is going to be on the exterior of the house?
Okay, that's a good question. It hasn't been picked specifically. There's many options in terms of stone veneer. It's, the intent is for it to be real stone, rough cut and applied. To be honest, eh, you know, we haven't sourced it, we don't know where it's going to be bought, exactly what color, but it's all intended to represent natural tones, warm kind of yellowish-brown tone, and not like a stark white fake stacked stone.
Yeah, well, and the image makes it look like it's going to be like paper white, so that's why.
Oh, yes, but that's between.
I know it's a representation.
Yes, it is just a representation. There was, in our full presentation to the planning department, there was a little sample provided, again, as an image, not an actual stone sample. Maybe that would have been a little bit better represented, but.
Yeah. And then, both for you and staff, I forgot to ask this one earlier. Is there any required fire review from the fire department?
Yeah, it's in, it's in review. So that's going to get secured before an actual building permit is provided for.
Okay, so there's no, if the review, if we approve tonight, and then, I'll, I'll reserve that question for later.
Any other questions?
I just had a follow-up about the septic system. So, the existing septic system is going to stay in place, and you're basically building an addition onto the septic system to accommodate for the new square footage.
Exactly.
How old is the current septic system?
1977.
Yeah, it's quite old, but it's been.
It's multifunctional.
Yes, it's been inspected, and there is a report from both the regular maintenance company and the Public Health Department that it's, there's no reason to think it would fail.
Okay.
You know, so.
But we also have a second dispersal field that's been worked into the plan.
Yes.
That has already been factored into this.
So, so the, the exist, so the plan that you're, you're proposing, you're adding the additional septic system onto the auxiliary, let's, is that, is that an okay word for everybody? The auxiliary septic system that you're adding on accommodates for the new square footage. If, if, if the older septic system were to go offline, you have proposed a, an area where you could dig out and replace that, according to the current, you know, laws and health regulations and all of that?
Right. Typically, it's not the tank that fails, it's the dispersal field. So that's, that's why you provision for a secondary dispersal field, which is what we've done.
Okay. All right, great, thank you. I don't have a septic system, so I just want to, I know, I know that they can be a pain, so I wanted to make sure that everything was.
You have no idea.
Yeah.
When they work, they were great. It's when it fails, but just like any regular plumbing system, when that fails, it's, it's a disaster. Yeah.
Thank you.
I apologize, I actually have, I feel like, real quick, there's a lot of puns that can be thrown into this conversation. I'll, I'll leave it there. No, I have another question, or two questions, actually. One, okay, so I take you're the architect?
Yes.
And then you are the homeowner?
I'm the homeowner.
Okay, and your names?
Nicole Redumis.
Michael Bryson.
Awesome, pleasure to meet you both. The second and last question I have, can we flip forward, I think, one slide? One more? Oh, no, back, I apologize. There's, the existing east view down there, there's a tree that is not in the representation here.
Yes.
Can you talk to what will happen to landscaping? I imagine if that tree goes away, it's probably not protected like an oak, but curious to know what's going to happen with the existing landscaping?
Yeah, the tree is being removed because it was encroaching on the foundation and creating problems with drainage in the area, so it is, has been removed.
Oh, it's already gone?
Yes.
Got it, okay. Thank you.
And, you know, just general landscaping, you know, front-of-house landscaping. There's currently was roses and bulbs there, that's what I had previously, so probably something like that.
I'm curious, what was the inspiration to remodel?
Oh. So now I get to talk. So I moved into this house seven years ago. In January, I bought it in January of 2018, moved in about April of 2018. And if you guys remember the year of 2018, Woolsey Fire came through, decided to burn three structures on my property, fencing and everything, it was pretty devastating. So this time, six years, six years ago, I was actually evacuated with my young daughter and trying to figure out what we're going to do next. Recovered from that a year and a half ago. My daughter and I were away for the weekend for a dance competition, came home to it raining inside of our house. A pipe had broken on the third floor, and had been, it was a high-pressure pipe supply line to the toilet. Check all of your supply lines, turn your water off before you leave, don't let this happen to you. It has been a year and a half of an absolute nightmare. So my inspiration was water damage. So two disasters in a five-year period, and here I stand before you. I tend to take disasters, and I make lemonade out of lemons. So that's what we're doing here today. If anybody has any vodka, I'd love to add that to it, because after a year and a half, I think it deserves a couple shots of vodka in there. So that's my inspiration, is disaster. And if, I'm not going to let any good disaster go unanswered without some positivity. So I'm taking that, and my wonderful, amazing architect, who has helped take my vision and turned it into something that I think really does better represent what our community of Oldega is about, which I've been a very, very active member of that community for the last seven years. I love it, it is my home, it's where my children come home to, and my grandchildren come home to, and this is my forever home. So I want to make it the most awesome, amazing place so that, that's where they all want to come back to. And one of them says they want to move back in. I don't know what I feel about that.
They do that these days. This clearly isn't why you're doing this, but I'm curious if, what sense you have of what this does to your home value and the home values of the homes around you.
Well, I think it's really more some of the other people who've done some amazing construction around me that has improved the home value. And, I mean, obviously, home value is a great thing, but it really doesn't benefit to you until you sell. So, I mean, home value, the only thing it does to me is make my taxes go up, so.
Well, with Prop 13, you're all right.
Do I still fall under that? I don't know. I'm, you know, I think home value is a great thing. I think we all want to look at really more than just home value, it's community value. And what we can do to grow our community and make our community a place that people want to move to, a place that people not just want to move to, but live. I think I have one of my neighbors here, actually, who knows the value of that.
Recuse yourself, yeah.
And, and, and that's really the value of Oldega, and I just have to comment, all of these people back here are my neighbors, my wonderful, lovely neighbors that I've known for, well, a couple of them I just met, but because they've just moved in recently. But that's really what it's about. It's these wonderful, amazing people that show up for you when you put the call out for help and say, please come and support my project, and they do. And that's really what it's about.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Yes, I just, I asked staff, but when I drove by, I looked like windows were being replaced, or is there?
It's, there's a lot of, you know, the water damage was very extensive, so there's been a lot of remediation, and a lot of stuff that they had to do to, to get the property so that it wasn't a mold problem, we don't want to, we don't want to create more problems. So definitely, it was, what you're seeing is just a lot of the remediation that was taking place.
Are you living in the house now, though?
If you saw that, what the house looked like on the inside, no, it's absolutely unlivable. I have been out of the house since March of 2023. So please get me back in my house, please.
I like what you're planning to do, so.
I'm sorry?
I like what you're planning to do, so.
Thank you so much.
Oh, okay, fantastic, thank you. I will now defer to the city clerk for public comments. If you have something to distribute to the planning commission, please hand it over to our city clerk. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker.
Thank you. Written public comments were received by email on or before the 4:00 PM deadline today. They were forwarded to the planning commission. Clifton and Tammy Von Buck and Christine Richardson, and I do not have any speaker cards.
Terrific. Okay. You are welcome to come up, and you have five more minutes if there's anything else that you would like to present or discuss. Okay, wonderful. All right, so before closing the public hearing, do any commissioners have any further questions for the applicant or for staff?
Yeah, on the, I alluded to this, but on the, on the consideration that the fire department hasn't yet approved the project, is anything that we do tonight, like for instance, if they reject something in the plans, like what, what would happen? I, I think that's a long shot, I don't think that's going to happen at all, but I'm just curious, because I don't want to set them up for failure.
The conditions of approval, Denise Thomas, Community Development Director, the conditions of approval allow me to take a look at minor changes, and if it's in substantial conformance with what is approved this evening, then at an administrative level, I can approve it. If major changes occur, then they have to come back through, they have to come back through the process.
Okay, fantastic. And again, I think that's a long shot, I just want to make sure we all clearly understand that. My last question for staff is, obviously, the representation of the stone was like very blinding from the presentation here. I'm curious to know what you all saw, and if you could communicate what the samples were that were shared with you all.
I'll defer the samples to Katrina, but I do have concerns about not, not designating a brick material, a stone material. Generally speaking, when projects come forward, they identify to you what materials and what the colors are going to be, and that gives staff guidance on how to approve it. It may not be the actual Acme Brick Number 14, but we would know, okay, it needs to be generally this brick, so that if someone came, we would have a comparison, and it would be consistent with your approval. Having nothing to compare it to is not what we ordinarily would do, and so I'm not really sure how you want to proceed with that. We could approve whatever is submitted, because we don't regulate the aesthetics of the brick, but it, I just want to make sure that you're aware that if you have, if no brick has been chosen, it will be whatever they bring.
So I have an idea. I heard the applicant say, yeah, that you had submitted some things, so perhaps, well, come on up, come on up as I sort of say this out loud. So perhaps we amend the conditions of approval to say that the stone will be something that approximates what was shared with staff.
Sure, that, that's fine with us. We can provide a sample, no problem, because we've, we have them, we've looked at them, we, honestly, not to put anybody out here on, we were never asked for, to bring an actual sample. No, not today, even before. It was all digital, which is the modern age, so everything was presented digitally, and that was fine. And yes, I understand those are, you know, printed images of a rendering and not at the highest quality, so they might not be a good representation of the actual stone. But if, if that's what you want, we can bring you, yes, exactly, that's better. That's the image that was, it's a part of a full page of all the samples with the actual product.
So we're talking, it's much more beige?
Yeah.
Natural looking?
It's a natural yellowish kind of stone, yes. It, it, it's a natural stone, so I can't really tell you it's one color, because it varies, obviously, but yes, it's not a bright white. That's not the intent.
I, I think what we all just want to make sure is that if we approve this, that we're not basically giving you carte blanche, pardon the pun, since we're talking about stark white walls, to, you know, choose hot pink stone veneer, right? I mean.
Understood.
Now.
Yes.
I mean, no, no offense to hot pink stone veneer, but, you know.
No, no, we know.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, I think that, I think we just want to make sure that we're, we're not, you know, giving unmitigated control to pick something later that, that might not go with the neighborhood.
Yeah, and if I may just jump in here a little bit, too, our architectural design standards and guidelines require earth-tone materials. So there's no situation where something like a hot pink.
No, no hot pink.
Would be allowable.
Okay.
As you can see in, on the screen, they submitted a gray and tan limestone. Which is consistent with our architectural design standards and guidelines. So I think if it was close to this, it's something that our director, if it's not, you know, exactly what this is, our director could make minor changes as she was suggesting, but anything substantial would come back.
I mean, I, you know, I'm aware that we have architectural standards, and we have colors and guidelines, you know, I just wanted to make sure that the way that this was documented wasn't giving, opening a door.
Would it be sufficient to say, put something in the, in the, the conditions of approval, a gray to tan limestone, or a limestone veneer, so that, you know, it doesn't have to be gray or tan, it could be just like kind of guardware, guardrails? Would that be?
Let's do natural, like, a stone veneer, just in case, like limestone isn't the thing that they necessarily want.
Yeah, would that?
Well, I'm not sure that's entirely necessary, because they still have to adhere, as Robbie just mentioned, to the design standards.
Okay.
Is that correct?
So is the, is the concern moot, then? Just because, like, he answered your question.
Well, I mean, for me, real quick.
I agree with, that our design standards say earth tones. But what is an earth tone? And we get into disagreements, we just had a hearing in front of you not that long ago, where earth tones were presented, but earth tone, those earth tones were not acceptable earth tones. And so if this is the, if this is the baseline, it needs to be something consistent with this, and this is what the applicant is choosing, then that's all we need. But without something that you're approving that says it needs to be this or something comparable, you could get white, white is an earth tone. You could get dark, dark brown, brown is an earth tone. You could get blue, blue's an earth tone, it's in the sky. So you need to tell us kind of which earth tone thing you want, and we will 100% make sure that it's consistent with that. This is, this is helpful, and we can find a, whatever they want to submit that's consistent with this image, I'm sure we can work with that.
Do. I, I don't think the intent is to go blue, right? So it just, typically, when we get presentations like this, and we see, we do see this, the material that are proposed, and that is fundamentally different than what was shown in the presentation with the white, and so I just want to make sure we have a clear understanding that that's the intent of the project.
Well, let's, let's go ahead and add a condition for review. Let's co-create it together, that is something to the effect of, and Travis, let me ask for your help in getting this worded correctly, that the, the veneer, or what's the word? It's not veneer.
It's a stone veneer.
That, that the stone veneer will be, yeah, comparable to the sample that was presented.
I would say comparable to gray or, and tan limestone.
Well, we don't want to say limestone in case there's another stone.
Yes, that would be helpful. It's, it's the color that you're concerned about, not necessarily.
Yeah, a gray or tan.
The actual material.
Yeah, gray or tone, gray or tan.
Natural stone.
Natural stone veneer, thank you. A gray or tan, natural stone veneer.
I just wanted to add on, real quick, our condition number four.
Yeah.
Actually already has.
No, is it there?
It actually already states, "All exterior materials used in this project shall be in conformance with the material samples submitted as a part of this application."
Ah, okay, so, actually, thank you, Robbie. I think then, Director Thomas, is that, okay. That's acceptable. Okay, fantastic. Well, we've got it, then.
Thank you.
All right, so, any further questions, comments? Terrific.
I'll, I'll add on. I'll, I'll add a quick comment, I just want to say thank you, the presentation, seeing the, the illustrations, the mockups are very helpful compared to the black and white little maps that I have in front of me, so I really appreciate that, thank you.
Back in the day, when we weren't very environmental, the planning commission used to get these giant color things, like, yeah, but it's much better this way. Okay, fantastic, I will now close the public hearing. And I will now move on to deliberations. Commissioner Stein, you have already shown your hand, would you like to get us started?
Yes, I've obviously visited the site, looked at the house, I also looked at all the findings, and I'm always supportive of somebody who's willing to upgrade their home, improve the community values, especially in Oldagora, and I can make all the findings.
Commissioner Sharon, as an Oldagora resident, would you like to share your thoughts?
Sure, I think that, you know, Commissioner Stein said it well, I think the remodel is always a welcomed attribute to our community, we get, you know, we, it makes our community beautiful, it, it, you know, you're, you're proud of your home in like a new capacity. I, I think it totally fits with Oldagora, and just bringing it up to today's, you know, what we, what we have there, you know, like, you're surrounded by all these homes that, you know, they're, your homes now, like, you know, actually it looks like the same houses that are coming up, and I, I think it's beautiful, it's really well done, it looks like a lot of care was taken into it, so I, I really, you know, I can make all the findings, you know, I did make some notes here about all the, all of the, where did I have it? It had all the things that it, 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 all the guidelines that it followed, essentially, you guys hit all of them, so that, you know, thank you, and I can make all the findings.
Terrific. Commissioner Reinhardt?
Thank you. I, you know, I've been a resident of Agora Hills for a really long time, and 2018 was a really difficult year for, for everybody here, and it's, you know, a testament to your, you know, fortitude that you want to, you know, fix everything and make it, make it beautiful, and, and also, I mean, it, it looks like a challenging piece of property in some ways, but it's also looks like it's worth every, every bit of hassle you've had to go through it because of where you get to live, and Oldagora is very special. So, you know, I mean, one of the things I think that all of us in, in our questions and our quest for, you know, being up here, is making sure that, you know, we preserve the high quality of life that, that exists in Agora Hills, and that, you know, any development, you know, be it a remodel or, you know, new construction, fits with the tone and the, and the tenor of, of, you know, the values of our community. And, you know, looking at this project and what you've put together, you know, I can make all the findings that, you know, you've, you've done all of that work, and I hope that, you know, if everything's approved, that your construction is swift and you can get back in your house.
Yeah, I'm going to echo everything that's just been mentioned, and by no means want to come across as trying to derail anything, I think this is a beautiful project. I'm so sorry to hear about, you know, two unfortunate, you know, experiences that you had that have taken you out of your home, I can't imagine, and hopefully, you know, as, as was just mentioned, you get back as swiftly as possible. I can also make all the findings, again, just want to double down the color thing, which I just wanted to be clear, but I think it's a beautiful project, and I wish you the best of luck in it.
Oh my gosh, this is what I love about Agora Hills, is we are very protective, especially in Oldagora, as it sounds like you know. So my favorite part of the night was when you said what really matters is value in the community. I love that you know your neighbors, I love that you have been such a part of Oldagora. I'm sorry for what you went through, both with the fire and with the flooding, and what wonderful lemonade you are making. As I was reading through it, I was making notes, like you're, you're putting back in the equestrian space, there's no wildlife disturbance, that it complies with, like, I too, like, I circled in big, like, it complies with, absolutely have no idea how many people come in and want variances, you want no variances on anything, everything that you're doing is in line with the code that we already have set. I love that it's a modern farmhouse, that it has a rustic feel, I too can make all the findings, and I'm super excited for your kids and your grandkids, I wouldn't blame them for wanting to come back at all, so. All right, then, okay, so we've all provided comments, all right, so now I need a motion. Vice Chair Roth is not allowed to make the motion, Commissioner Stein, will you make a motion for us?
Commissioner Stein makes a motion to approve staff recommendations to approve conditional use permit and site plan architectural review permit, and oak tree permit, and to encroach in a protected zone of one oak tree, and make a determination to exemption under CEQA.
Beautifully done. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Sharon, seconds?
I will now call for a roll call.
Commissioner Reinhardt?
Aye.
Commissioner Sharon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Vice Chair Roth?
Aye.
Chair Anderson?
Aye.
Chair Anderson, you have approval, five to zero.
Are there any comments from staff? Congratulations, it'll take a moment. Well, we're not yet, Bruce, we're not, if we might, we're not yet done, we have, we have a commission meeting still.
Yes.
Oh, hold on, yes, we even have an announcement. Yes.
The decision of the planning commission is final unless it's appealed within 15 days from the date of this decision to the city council, thank you.
Thank you, Director Thomas. Are there any comments from the staff? Any comments from our planning commission? No, okay.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Hold on, apparently there are.
To be clear, I think this is someone's last planning commission meeting with us, is that right? Can, 95%, Kimberly, is that correct? Is this Chair Anderson's last meeting with us? Well, on, I mean, I'll speak for my fellow commissioners on behalf of all of us, one, we're going to miss you. You've been an absolute incredible leader on this commission, and congratulations on your election, congratulations for making it to the city council, and we're looking forward to watching you continue to lead in our city. Appreciate everything.
Well, Vice Chair Roth and my fellow commissioners, I just want to say thank you, it has been such a joy to serve with you, I served with a planning commission in a different constellation, and they were lovely, there is such camaraderie, such a collective spirit of wanting to do the right thing for Agora Hills, I really, really enjoy getting to know you and look forward to continuing to work with you in a different capacity.
We get to heap on a little bit more praise, you're not, you don't just get to cut us off and like finish with that, so, thank you for that, but it really has just been, you know, an absolute honor to work with you on the, on the planning commission, and I've, I've learned so much from you, and, and again, your passion for the city, and what it, you know, what, what it has been and what it can be is, is really beautiful, and, you know, I know you, you're not necessarily into baseball, but this is like, you know, triple A, and you're getting called up to the big leagues, you know, and the show they carry your bags, so we will, we will miss you immensely, but obviously, we will still be, you know, working with you closely, and, and for that, we're grateful, so thank you for everything.
You're welcome, thank you, thank you. Okay, now I'm going to call for adjournment. Oh, hold on, wait, before we adjourn, the next regular planning commission is scheduled for 6:30 PM on Thursday, December 5th, though it sounds like that may not happen, in the council chambers located right here at 3001 Lady Face Court, Agora Hills, California. The meeting is now adjourned?